Yes, we are.
Bill Green here, Bill.
For a second there I thought your hat said make America great again.
You didn't wear that one today.
We will convene this Administrative Services Committee. And we're going to juggle the agenda a little bit. I want to thank Douglas County Treasurer John Ewing and his crack staff for joining us joining us today in our ongoing series of strategic plan reports. We appreciate greatly the cooperation of the elected officials in this collaborative effort. It will be good for us all, but it only works if we work on it. So, John and Chief Deputy Tim Kavanaugh are here with us today and they have Treasurer's Office Strategic Plan Report. So, John, thank you for coming.
Sure, absolutely.
And take it away.
Okay.
Just lay a little foundation for you based on your conversations also, but as the Douglas County Treasurer's Office, our goal is always to work cooperatively with the rest of county government. Tim and I have a great deal of experience in city government and that's how we work with the Police Department, working with the Fire Department, the Mayor's Office, across the board on issues like bonds and the capital improvement plan as well as budgets. And that's what we intend to do here. So, what you'll see is our vision, recognizing that we always want to be good partners and figure out how to go forward. And so, the first thing that we have on the agenda, and it blocked it a little bit, but is the Thomas Fitzgerald Home. We believe that offers us some great opportunities as the Douglas County Treasurer's Office in light of a number of things that are in play right now. The first thing it allows us to do is have our Northwest Omaha office located in a place that makes a little more sense than 108th and Maple. It also allows us to have a drive-through which we've had great success with at the Millard office and also at the South Omaha office. The state looks like they're going to go to a super center concept where they're going to have maybe one facility in Douglas County that would be serving all of the citizens of Douglas County, potentially places like Washington County, and I don't know how far that will extend. So, by being at this location and with all the land that's available there, we also potentially have an opportunity to bid on an RFP that the state is going to put out for driver services and potentially have a location there that then works for the citizens of Douglas County because you have the Treasurer's Office and the DMV together in one location even though we won't be in the same facility. And I think that's important as we look at what's best for the citizens of Douglas County long-term. The other advantage for us is we get the opportunity to at least look at this particular facility and extend hours and instead of closing at four o'clock, which is not the best, but what we've had to do with the limited staffing and other issues, not being able to run two shifts, we get the opportunity to do that as well. And then for the county, you obviously don't have the lease payments that would only go up from here based on where they're at today at 108th and Maple and the fact that if we ever located somewhere else, those payments would be much more expensive. So, that's what we're looking at with the Fitzgerald Home. And I already mentioned a number of those things. One of the things that we've talked about, and keep in mind, we're not saying that we don't want to be at the midtown location at 84th and Cass, but as we look long-term on what might be the best plan for customer service centers, we believe the possibility of going to a four corners plan might work best for the county. And then offer opportunities for that space to be utilized. One of the things I have talked about a lot is when I look at like the Election Commission Office not telling the board where they should go, but that would be a facility that would be great for that in terms of drive-in, being able to put the ballots in secure places and things like that and then be more centrally located for those people who want to vote or who want to register to vote at that particular office. So, that's just something I throw out there simply because I'm always, like I said, looking at how do we partner with the county. Part of that, however, is that the Sheriff's Department would also need to locate the inspection station at the Fitzgerald Home, which is something they have to decide. So, all of this is something that is in play based on what all of the county players would like to do. And so, we're always looking at how we partner and how we become more efficient because I don't look at the facilities that we pay rent for as something we don't have to worry about even though it doesn't come out of our budget. It's still county taxpayer money, and so we always take that into consideration. Right now currently, and we should have a decision, if not this week, certainly early next week, we are looking at an RFP for electronic payments. One of the things we're looking to do is try to get down to one provider if the state Nebraska Interactive would win that bid. If not, then potentially two bidders because we cannot, or two service providers. We cannot have the registrations and other things go to another service because of the state DMV contracts. If we could, we'd look at just one contract for everything even if they didn't win, but we can't do that. So, at minimum, we go from three or four vendors to two and potentially one, which is much more efficient for all of county government because we actually provide all of the services for other offices that use electronic payments, or I should say the majority because there are a couple offices that use other systems, but they all utilize our Inova system and things like that.
John?
Yes.
Is it an RFP or is it a competitive bid?
It is an RFP.
And their bids are being tabulated now where?
Proposals are being tabulated. I always like to keep the words bid and RFP separate because the bid has to do with the competitive bidding process under the purchase statute.
Sure, it's an RFP.
So, it's a professional service?
Yes.
And we'd be looking at this to be an enterprise-wide, consumer-wide payment system.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Let me ask you a question on that, John, because I kind of campaigned on this issue in terms of making it more available to do your business electronically. If you're doing, you know, registration or something online, there's a fee involved in this from the credit card company, right? Is there any way to get away from that so that it doesn't cost any more than going there personally? The problem is somehow you'd have to pay for that fee. And we looked at that initially nine and a half years ago, and the cost would be more than we could save in terms of personnel and facilities costs.
And actually, that's what the proposal is for, the lowest fees. That's what we're asking leaders to submit their proposals for. So, it's a pass-through charge to the user, but we still want the taxpayer to get the best deal.
Diane Wallace is involved in this?
She helped us.
Yeah, Diane Wallace purchasing as well as dot-com. So, everybody's involved.
Seeing the big numbers when you pay your sales tax on a B M.
Right.
So, then it becomes a cost to that taxpayer.
We had, we estimated back in 2007 when we first started looking at this, that it would cost anywhere from $800,000 to about $1.5 million to subsidize that cost and have the county absorb it because the cost is going to be paid as a matter of who pays it.
Some of the things we face is when you buy a good or service at a retail store, those fees are in the cost of the good or product you're buying and they're hidden in the cost. We can't hide it because it's a tax. So, we're upfront about the fees.
But are you confident that there would be a reduction through this RFP process or? We hope so. We can't guarantee that. We have to continue to look at, but that's why we went this route to try to get that lower cost because what we're trying to do is increase the volume that any vendor would actually have. So, rather than have, say, US Bank doing property tax payments and Grant Street, which provides our end customer service center services and over the telephone and some of those type of things, rather than have them have a smaller piece, they actually get a larger piece of county government. And then the more other offices you can get involved, the more those fees can be. And when will you have this process complete? We hope to do it by the end of this week.
We've been working on it a little bit, so it just hasn't been summarized yet.
Okay.
Let us know if you want to answer.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Greg.
Absolutely. And then one of the things we're doing in working with dot-com and through our systems people is we're looking at always trying to make sure we have quality equipment. So, with our Treasurer's Office computers, monitors, those type of things, we've gone to the lease system that dot-com proposed and we're replacing those once every four years rather than having eight, nine, 10-year-old computers on the front line. So, we think strategically that'll save money, but it'll also increase the ability to have good equipment for our folks every day. We also have done a lot of things in terms of security and things of that nature. So, when citizens come into our offices, they feel safe and we can make sure that their transactions are recorded properly, the employees are doing the right things as they're taking money, those types of things. And then I know some of you have been around long enough to remember what happened at North Omaha a few years ago with the robbery of the security company. And so, we're always taking security in mind and making sure that we give our employees the best and citizens the best opportunity to be safe. Working very closely with Joe and Clerk's Office as well as Mr. Michael Green, who's a former Douglas County Commissioner and owner of Evergreen Capital, we put together the Treasurer's Investment Council, which should increase the amount of investment income by at least a million dollars a year. We're going to continue to work to refine that and make sure we have the maximum amount of money we can have in those investments to offer a greater return to the citizens and also once again to partner with the county board as we look at budget issues each year.
Can we get our hands on some of those? I didn't know those existed.
Somebody will try to pass it.
Yeah, exactly. John, you indicate in here that the Council's projecting over a million dollar increase in annual investments. Explain that to us a little bit. Sure. One of the things we had to do prior to getting an interpretation from the county attorney's office was we had to invest in very safe things like CDs and treasury bills and things like that. We've since gotten an interpretation from the county attorney's office that we can mirror the Nebraska Investment Council and what they do. So, we've had a number of meetings with them to see how they invest the state's money. And then we've also worked with Joe and others to get a firm that will be hired to manage that for us and do a better job than just investing in CDs and treasury bills and things like that, really conservative investments. So, we've aggressively gone to the county attorney's office and said, "We think we should be able to do this," and they agree.
We involve the Clerk's Office because of the payments that go out from the Clerk's Office. We want to make sure that we have enough money to cover all our bills because there's an ebb and flow, of course, with revenue and expenses. So, we want to make sure that they have input so that we don't cut too close, too low.
But we also don't want to leave so much money in the bank that we're not maximizing our returns as well. That sounds very interesting. The Investment Council, how long? That's been up for about a year? No, we've been putting it in place. We've got a person who's going to help us select the firm to manage the money. We've just had a meeting recently with him to be able to start that process. So, I would imagine.
We'll have the interview, the final three firms in July and hopefully by August we'll have it up and going in.
The dreaded plate year. 2017 is a plate year. Keep in mind, folks, that we don't have anything to do with the design.
Yeah, right.
So, whether you like it or not, we don't have anything to do with that. We do know that we've got to have full staffing and we're making plans for those type of things so we can be successful for the citizens. We've actually got one of our retired experts who's going to come back part-time to help us with this process because it is something we only do every six years now. And so, it makes it difficult when you don't have that experience, but we've got her coming back. One of the things that we talked about during the budget hearings is that our postage cost will increase significantly, but our revenue will also increase significantly. And we're not asking, as we stated at that time, for an increase in our budget to meet that increased postal expense. But it will create some challenges, so if anybody hears complaints, know that we're doing the best we can when you have to get plates for 450,000 vehicles or so in Douglas County to the owners.
Just remember, every set of stickers is a set of plates starting game.
Where are those plates stored? We store them right now, for the most part, we've been storing them in our downtown space. What we're looking to do, and that's one of the reasons the Fitzgerald Home is great for us as well, we're looking to do more storage at the customer service centers. So, the plates are there rather than having to transport them. But we have limited space there, but with the Fitzgerald Home, we would have much more space for these type of things. And then it's easier to get plates for the western part of Douglas County from 150 Third and Maple to 144th and U than it is to do it from downtown. So, that's, those are the type of things we're looking at long-term. The best news I've probably heard from the state since I've been the treasurer is they are looking at.
I want the car too.
They are looking, that's not my car, but it looks like my car. They are looking to get what they call a new VTR system, which is the Vehicle Titleing and Registration System that we use to register vehicles. What we're looking at with that is it will replace a 30-year-old system that they've kind of used duct tape and other things to put together and hold it together, but it will also allow us to do things like making sure that we can provide even better customer service. We're going to look at being part of that committee that decides on this new system so we can potentially have kiosks and other things, maybe at malls or supermarkets or things like that, so people can actually go in and register their vehicle there. So, just looking at how we can take advantage of this type of thing. The other thing, maybe it's just being a retired police officer, but I believe people should pay their taxes. And one of the things we've worked with the state on is trying to figure out ways to make sure people register their vehicles here in Nebraska rather than in South Dakota or Iowa and other places because it does cause a loss of revenue to the state of millions of dollars each year. And we've had some operations with the state to do that, but what we're looking to try to do with this new system is track a vehicle from purchase to registration, which we can't do today with the system we have. So, it's not looking at increasing people's taxes, it's looking at making sure people pay their fair share and then maybe taxes can be lowered.
Very good. Hi, John.
Yes.
If you, if I'm a council bluff president and I buy, pick a dealership here in Omaha, I don't pay my personal property tax here for that, do I?
You don't pay your personal property tax here. You could pay your sales tax here, yes.
Sales tax. But that, is that at the time of purchase?
It's not right now.
They give you that slip.
Yes. One of the things I've tried to do is get the state legislature and the Nebraska Dealer Board to try to collect that at the time of sale.
They want nothing to do with the duty.
No, we're still going to keep pushing.
As you know, some states do collect it at the time of the purchase and then license it in Nebraska, then we give you credit against that.
And dealing.
Yes. A number of states do that. We have not had any success, but we're going to continue to push on that. One of the innovations we've had and we're going to continue to utilize this is the Property Tax Division actually does the tax certificate sale online now. Once again, looking at how we do business and being aggressive and talking to the county attorney's office, they've agreed we could do this online. So, we've done this online now for about five years, five or six years. And what it does is it keeps dot-com, it keeps our staff from working probably two or 300 hours of overtime to prepare for this, and then it also keeps us from having to lease out space because one of the things that happened is we had a one-day tax sale and then we had a two-day tax sale and it looked like it was going to continue to expand. So, we're able to do this online now and save a tremendous amount of wear and tear on everybody's staff as well as money when it comes to conducting the sale. And the cost of the sale itself is an offset of revenue that we get when people purchase the tax certificates. So, it's at basically no cost to the county to do this. One of the things we've done is try to make sure we have one of the best-trained staffs in government, especially when it comes to ethics training. Our staff has gone through the Business Ethics Alliance Toolkit training. We've gone through training with Gallup that normally costs about $10,000 and we were able to get that free. We've also just recently gone through the Elevate training with all of our supervisors or all of our assistant managers and hire in the organization. And we're the first governmental entity to do those things, but we were able to do that when that normally costs $4,500 for free as well. So, we're going to continue to look for those opportunities, especially when it comes to ethics. And then we also just last Thursday submitted to the Better Business Bureau an application for their business integrity. So, we're one of the competitors for that as well as we try to move our office forward and be more like a business.
Did you understand, no government office ever?
No government office has ever participated even. So, we're hoping not only to participate, but to win. John, regarding that, one of the things that we are interested in looking at from a strategic plan point of view is succession policy. None of us is getting any younger and we've had in recent months and last year, some senior people move on and fortunately we've had kind of succession plans in place to fill those. We don't have to go into this much today, but it's one thing that we hope that each department and each elected official will give some thought to. With the baby boomers kind of hitting the retirement age category, it's something that's upon us and we're, you know, we're heavy with talent who's been here a long time. I give a nod again to Bill Green. There's no succeeding Bill, but everybody else is probably in our generation looking at that in the next five or 10 years. I would say that Tim and I have had those conversations since the day we got there. Part of the reason we do so much training and we do so much investment in our staff is to prepare for that. If I were to disappear today, Tim would be my obvious choice for replacement. If Tim was gone, then we would be looking at some of the people within the organization but also willing to bring talent in. So, we've had some conversations in terms of developing people, getting them used to the concept. One of the things I find in county government is that the employees really aren't that interested in being in front of the media. And so, we're only the exception to Joe Laram.
Yeah.
So, we're always looking to do things to overcome that and give people exposure publicly to different things like that.
I might add too, whenever we have a testing process for promotion in our office, all of our processes are geared toward identifying leadership and characteristics and with an eye on succession. So, in fact, when we hire people off the street, we try to identify some leadership qualities, even though the position we're hiring for may not be a leadership position, but we want to identify future leaders, right from the beginning.
And John's familiar with this as well, but one of the things we've done is actually implemented what we call interactive in-basket training and assessment center-type training like what we went through at the Police Department in order to get promoted. So, we do that even at the entry level. You're not just going to come in and take a typing test and get hired by the Treasurer's Office. You're going to go through a customer service scenario. You're going to go through a panel interview and things like that as well as a final interview with me. So, we've done those things in order to, first of all, have a fair process, fair and objective, but also to identify that talent at each level. Great, thank you. One of the things we do is we try very hard when it comes to audits. We actually have a Senior Director of Auditing and Accounting and we will continue to do some of those things that you see up there, but that was actually a position that I created in 2007, six months after I took office because of some of the things I saw in the Treasurer's Office at the time. And so, we've had that position in place and tried to cooperate with all of the auditors, including the county's internal auditor, Hazen Associates, or whoever does the main audits. We may not always agree, but we are always looking at what's the best resolution on those type of things, as well as each of our employees is audited on a continuous basis and we also do ethics training for every member of the organization every year. And then we have hired the staff member that we were directed to in cooperation with the county board to move us from QuickBooks to Oracle Cash Management, and that process is going well. We'll let him continue to look at all of the things we do and then at some point, we will have an update for you to let you know how that process is going. But when we started, we actually started over there with Quicken, which is not an accounting package you want to have if you're collecting $1.5 billion. So, we actually looked at moving from that with limited resources and the best thing we could find spending money out of our budget that wasn't budgeted for at that time was QuickBooks. But we had to do something because of what we saw and wanting to protect the citizens. That's great. You know, Oracle allows us greater transparency. Absolutely. And so, everybody being on the same floor. Yeah, I don't know why that didn't happen 15 years ago. I wasn't here. Had I been here, we would have gone to the same accounting system that everybody else did. So, it's really playing catch-up. That's it. Thank you, John and Tim. We appreciate your input on this and again, we really appreciate the cooperation and participation of elected officials in this ongoing strategic planning process. Please stick around because you're also part of the next, if you've seen the agenda discussion relative to the upcoming bond issue, which you referred in your strategic plan report as an integral part of how you see the future of Treasurer's Office.
as an integral part of how you see the future of treasurer's office developing at the Fitzgerald facility. We're excited about that as well. These issues that you see on here, one and two, county space needs and bond issues, are inextricably intertwined. Because as you indicated, with your strategic view of moves the treasurer would like to make, if you move from one space, it opens up something behind you. And so, if you're moving from one hundred and eighth to the Fitzgerald facility, you know, it begs the question, what do we do with one hundred and eighth? If we do something with the Cass Street facility, it begs the question, you know, what do we do with Cass Street? And I think you've given us some food for thought in terms of using that prime central location to solve another problem that we have, possibly with the election commissioner's office. We'd have to have input from them and from the sheriff's office. But those are interesting ideas, and I appreciate you bringing those to us. It's the essence of strategic planning. You have the strategic view in a nutshell right there. So we have county space needs and bond issue and bond issue. If I'm reading the paper correctly, according to Joe, it is good to go at, what was the number you gave him, Joe?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, which is, you know, interesting. And that's the number that I have on this page, which is, just to recap, and, you know, this is plus or minus, and I'm sure that Jerry will have some input on this. The proposal would be thirty-five point three million, plus or minus, with construction costs of twenty point three and nine eleven costs of fifteen. We have the interim return, I don't know what your current title is.
Interim Deputy Director.
Okay, back-to-the-future Deputy Director. Here with us today, I appreciate you coming out. That cost is fifteen million.
Come on, Mark isn't worth fifteen million dollars.
Priceless, priceless. Two point seven million for replacement of radios for corrections sheriffs, which I believe might be included in that fifteen million from previous discussions we've had. Seven million for corrections with upgrades of some old sites. And Dr. Foxall is here with us today. So that's the overview that gets us to the forty-five million. The square footage, I think you're all aware of generally what that was from previous handouts that we've had. It all fits and is a great use of our West Omaha campus with the strategic idea that the center of population of Douglas County has moved west. Our services need to move west. We are fortunate enough to have a prime piece of property there that for a good price, we can rehab into productive space for a lot of different applications. And at the same time, do some upgrades that are needed by our public safety components to operate efficiently in the twenty-first century. So, Jerry, with that, what's the latest?
Well, I don't think anything has changed as far as components in the Fitzgerald home. So I think the last couple of meetings, we've kind of been in agreement that the members that belong are nine-one-one, the treasurer's branch office, environmental services, and emergency management. So that's kind of been in the plans forever, it seems like. And as John and Tim stated, you know, the need for, their needs for a better branch office, a strategically placed facility that we own and operate with a drive-through is going to benefit taxpayers. And also, for the first time, I think the western communities of the county will have a service that's a lot closer to them. And at a later date, there may be others that join, which would make it even more attractive. So I think it's clear space, I think we're there. At the finance committee meeting, we're gonna have, basically, the numbers that are gonna be coming off the press, the deals that the corrections caused. But I don't think Joe was far off at the forty-five million. But, you know, we talked about a detailed inspection and tour of corrections professionally to give us the answers to what we thought. And it's not just plumbing, it's lots of things, deal with public safety.
And I know that we'll get into the numbers more in the finance committee this afternoon on this. But reading the information that we had from previous discussions, the square footage allocation on this, eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty-four for nine eleven, eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine for the treasurer's branch and DMV, twenty-four hundred and ninety-eight for environmental services, and twenty-four hundred for emergency management are consistent with what we're looking at today. Is that right? Or there hasn't been any big change one way or another? The overall space that we are looking at for the upgrade at the Fitzgerald is about fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-one. That's the latest out, yeah, that's correct? And that would allow us some future expansion space that would be ready to go, pretty much, in the Fitzgerald home, is that right?
Correct.
Do we have an idea, just a ballpark of the square footage of that future expansion space?
Doing the math here real quick.
Yeah.
Probably about, probably gonna have about, was it eighteen thousand? Because of the, you know, you can't include the hallways, the elevators, stairwells, the restrooms, the circulation. So, you know, those things make a difference. But I think it's about eighteen thousand.
Right.
Now.
Broke into two separate areas.
I see, on two separate floors?
Yeah, not, no garden level, so it moves up to first and second. And, you know, if you remember, it's been quite a while, but we tried to fit the assessor registry deeds.
Right, right.
It didn't happen.
They need too much contiguous space.
Right.
This is second floor, and basically, we have the expansion on second floor. This is kind of a nice way to spot which emergency management might be too. So that would lessen the eighteen thousand by twenty-five hundred square feet. So basically, we'd have the second floor.
Okay, so that contiguous space there in the middle.
Right here, yeah.
Yeah, would be fifteen thousand and change?
Correct.
Right. And I think the assessor registry deeds had come in with a need of somewhere in the area of fourteen thousand?
No, it was sixteen something plus the vault. Two vaults, so thirty-five hundred a piece. Just took them right out of the board. Be more than one way.
Yeah, okay. Well, we have, as a result of these proposed relocations, five existing locations that we would no longer need, at least for the use that they are being used for now, two of which we own, three of which we lease. So, correct me if I'm wrong, the properties that we own, would we repurchase those? Or would it be the idea to maybe sell those?
Oh, the ones we own? Well, environmental services would be surplus, sold.
That's the only building, though, right?
That's the only.
That's the only building. And we were talking about EOC space, which is in the C level. And we're talking about treasures, which you lease. And that, is that it, right?
That's it.
So the leases that we have, we would, and this includes your leases, we would terminate those leases?
Well, the way it was structured originally, we thought in two thousand fourteen it would pass. And that lease expired in two thousand sixteen.
Which lease?
Hundred and eighth of May. But because it failed, we extended the lease. And now we timed it to two thousand eighteen with their agreement and wishes to remain until we see if we get another bond that passes. So if things all went well, that lease would expire the month that they move in. And we're.
Sure, and they let us go month to month on a couple of occasions when we were looking at that bond issue before. So I don't think if we were a month or two off, there'd be major problems.
May thirty-first of eighteen. You know, this gets into a little bit of finance later, but just a piece for those that weren't here. We did some actual calculations of the cost for the hundred and eighth of May. And then we took it out twenty years. That's two million dollars in lease payments that would not be going out the door.
And that's with no accelerator in the rent?
Right, with no acceleration. So just, you know, roughly, all in, triple net, eighty-five hundred a month. Just do the math, do twenty years, and it's over two million, which could be, if you want to look at it another way for finance, revenue that can help pay the bond. And that's the reason.
And I think the other part of that is with that state DMV RFP, they will need a place to locate in Douglas County, and then they would pay rent. So if you had them on the Fitzgerald home, a freestanding facility, then there would be revenue from them as well.
Correct. That would be a triple net to the state, maybe quadruple.
Harvey, you want to structure it, Jerry, you just.
Revenue, that wouldn't be.
We have some of the other stakeholders here, and I appreciate folks showing up. Dr. Foxall from Corrections, if you'd like to.
I spoke about it before in the past about the different types of things that were questioned in addition to the radios. And my count this morning is thirteen oh six. We haven't been as high in almost eight years. All of my housing units opened, and I found about one hundred and ninety-two miles invested, and they're continuing to pour in. Now, this isn't a phenomenon of the College World Series, but we've gone through College World Series, former trials. And we should be at about eleven hundred, and we're thirteen oh six. And rising to pour in last night. So, to the point that I made, I need space. Get another hundred, actually, another fifty or sixty people. And I'm gonna be looking to pawn people out, or cut federal detainees, or cut Kickstarter deals, or something like that. Then that begins to dip into the revenue numbers, which has really helped us in highway time, year of fiscal fifteen, fifteen, sixteen. So I need housing units that are safe and secure, and I want my inmates in. I'm just a small fucker, but I need doors that are safe and secure. I need officers to see through the glass, the black sand, those housing units. So come back around to, run six, seven, eight housing units closed. We've been building our population the last few years slowly. But is this an anomaly this year? I don't know, but I have to prepare for the worst and some positive elements.
Well, in the document that we're operating off of, it has seven million dollars for corrections, old site nineteen seventy-six, infrastructure and renovation, excluding the annex of nineteen eighty-eight annex. Are you indicating that you may need a little more than that? Some of the things you need to do?
I just need, hopefully, whether the storm got hot quick, which will probably exacerbate the problem. But I just need to be able to operate within what I've got now. And I figure the rest out later, but I have all twenty-eight, twenty-nine, my housing units operable. And they are right now, but that additional pressure, as I said in the past, we run four or five housing units below this ground for a year. But if you run with those housing units wide open, then that puts additional pressure on the four-year-old building. Those doors need to be replaced, as I said. You have some issues, yes, more to use, you know, the retina glass and optics again. So let's start with getting what I've got, despite the damage up to par. And then if I need more on that, that's a question.
So if I'm hearing you right, the seven million that we're anticipating in this package is sufficient?
No, no, no.
I'm sorry?
No, yeah, it's gonna be more than that.
I see, okay, that's good. I mean, the principle is, let's do it right. And if it costs a little more, we don't want to come back and have to do this in a series of bites. We'd like to include it in this.
And I know they're gonna talk about the final numbers, but I, on the operations side, I want you to let me know where we're at today, because I don't think I've spoken to thirteen hundred members of this group in the past, but.
One of the things that we've discussed in the past is the property that's currently on the Corrections Campus occupied by the bus station. Is there any change in the status of that property?
No, I just got it checked yesterday, so it's been through July.
They're a month of month operation, right? Are we in communication with them relative to their long-term use plan?
Yeah, I've talked to a little bit, and then Tracy, I guess, in a communication also. So if we get a label situation, termination or extension, like I told her about, the ideas that I'm talking about, yeah. You know, we're looking at.
We also have the nine eleven folks here today. You've, I think, been aware of this all along in terms of how we're approaching your needs. Do you have anything to contribute relative to your space needs?
No, space-wise and everything, but we've, it's just that the radio figure seems to be a moving target between, it's almost like there's a lot of people want to pile onto the bond issue with the city and everything else. So trying to determine, right now, that's a moving target. I feel that what we've estimated is good, but I see, you know, we found out the fire didn't get their total grant, so, I mean, it's, right now, radios are a moving target. And that's something that we're gonna have to make a decision, where do we go with that? So I'm just saying, it's unclear right now because of the city.
We'll talk about that at the finance committee meeting, but yeah, there's an update on that.
All right.
Do we have the meetings set up with first responders, as it's set yet?
I don't know, Diane was handling that.
Looking at July seventh, we're trying to get everybody, I didn't understand.
I responded, said I could do it.
And so hopefully, we'll get with them to get moving on the community support aspect.
That happens.
I think that it's in the works, so hopefully, that's gonna come about. Environmental Services, any input on your component?
You have all the information that I provided, I don't have anything to add to that, answer any questions that you have.
And that should be just about it. I know the sheriff's office is here, do you have any input on any of these?
You know, maybe just one comment on John's presentation. We run a title inspection independent of the treasurer's office and not with the treasurer's office. I can say from a public service standpoint, it's much better that we remain with the treasurer's office. It makes it easier for the public to car inspect it and then go plate the vehicle and not have to drive another party down to do it. So if they move, we would prefer to move with them.
All right, Environmental Services.
Nothing new to report, other than what we've given you before, it's the same.
I think, you know, particularly with you folks in Environmental Services, when we come to the meeting with the first responders group, this will be the first in a series of meetings with community groups, this is outreach. But they're interested in public safety implications of the bond issue. And so I would urge you to be prepared to address those for your departments at that time. And looks now that that time is gonna be on or about July seventh. So we are presenting them with, here's all the good stuff that this bond issue will do. do primarily for public safety, first responders in the Douglas County area. So please be ready to do that. 9/11 as well, of course, but I think you guys are already pretty much up to speed on your presentation from what I've seen. We will be calling on you at that time in the dialogue going forward. But like I said, that's going to be the first of a series of these. We're going to be reaching out to the community to try to inform them of how this benefits public safety and county government in general. So we are joined here by four of our commissioners. Commissioner Duda, Kraft, Morgan, any input before we adjourn and read downstairs?
I'm going to be conversing with Captain Melanie Bates. We're playing phone tag right now with them off fire, trying to help better understand the radio, the grant picture and everything relating to the bond.
Yeah, this would affect all of the volunteer fire departments in Douglas County. And there are, how many of those?
Seven.
Okay. So you're reaching out to those folks as well?
Yeah, they discussed at the chief's meeting last week.
Commissioner Kraft, anything? Thanks, everybody. We'll see you downstairs. Thank you, John. First up, I think, first.
So we need to talk to you down in the apartment more.